And welcome to the July fourteenth zoning board hearing. I've asked members to review the minutes from the last meeting if they're okay, I'd like to take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary, we have a second.
Second.
Second by?
Charlie.
Charlie, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make sure that gets timestamped. Just before we hit our seven oh five meeting, a quick note, so that everybody's aware. Last meeting, we had handed out some updated information on the possible issue of the forty B process hitting this board. I do know that department heads and the town departments actually had to answer some questions concerning the application that was submitted into mass housing. I believe that's in the process. We don't know what the status of that's going to be at this point in time, but I'm sure we'll get notified if that does start coming across the board's desk. But just as an update to make sure that we review the regulations concerning any type of application that comes in under that forty B sector. All right, we have any other business that anybody needs to address with the board tonight? Is there no business?
Just confirm our next meeting because of the planning board is going to meet, I think it's the third Tuesday, so our meeting actually...
Scheduled currently for the August fourteenth. Correct? Is that what we have confirmation? I'm sorry, August eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
August eighteenth.
So just so they know, it's not the second Thursday, it'll be the third Thursday.
And usually when we end up going into the third Thursday, sometimes we meet up in room four?
Yeah.
Room three upstairs.
Room three upstairs?
I mean fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay, so we'll have to note that. Great. All right, we have the first hearing. Why don't you come up, we'll sit in the front desk here, and as I start reading the application, we can move forward with the seven oh five hearing. This currently is on the application of Anthony R. and Mariella Oliva, eighty-nine Main Street Milford, for a variance of the provisions of sections two point four, two point five of the zoning bylaws. Are those provisions related to an eleven thousand nine hundred plus or minus square foot lot? The possible land located on the southeast of the side of East Main Street and Plain Street in Milford, which property is known and numbered as eighty-nine Main Street and utilized by the Olivas Kitchen and Catering Company. The variance relief is sought to allow the replacement of an existing awning on the main street of the building with a roof overhang notwithstanding the intensity use provisions of the bylaw. The applicant has submitted some plans here, I'll pass these around, you'll also get reference to what's on the board. I'll have to share a couple of those. These are the building architectural appears.
Here's those down there, you and I will show this.
In addition, sorry, my thing is buzzing, I have to shut it off. In addition to that, through the application process, the applicant was asked a few questions concerning the aspects of the condition of the property, the shape and topography of the property, and the applicant states that the existing building was construction before the enhancement of the zoning bylaw and its existing non-conforming use. Due to the size, shape, and topography of the land, it cannot be conformed into our current zoning regulations. Upon the question whether variance was granted would hardship be caused by the circumstances described above, the applicant states that the failure to grant the variance will cause customers not entering the premises causing financial hardship. Concerning the question to state the feeling that if the grant, that the variance would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, the applicant stipulates it will be an improvement to the existing building and not a deterrent. With that, in the file, the applicant has filed the proper documentation. On a quick note, the planning board did review the petition at their June twenty-first meeting and did recommend the favorable recommendation to be sent off to the zoning board. And also, the town planner indicated to see a letter to the planning board, and just a quick overview that the application was requesting, is requesting a variance for the replacement of the current awning and of the subject property. The existing building is non-conforming as to the front yard setback being located approximately one point seven feet from the front East Main Street property line, where twenty-one, twenty-five feet is required. Specifically, the proposal is to replace the existing awning on the front of the building with a one point six by forty-eight point five inch permanent roof overhang. Therefore, the town planner also recommended a favorable report be forwarded over to the zoning board. With that, we'll turn the chair over to the applicant. Do you have a question?
No, I just think that we should just close the hearing and vote yes. It's kind of ridiculous to have an overhang on the thing.
Well, if there's something he wants to add, I'd like him to give the opportunity.
Just close the hearing and vote yes. If no one else has anything with it, you know?
Do I gain one?
I don't know, but you know, what's the point? You know what I mean, it's ridiculous, you know what I mean, you know?
I'm going to allow you to just have a couple of words.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That definitely makes my job easier. We've, I'm here tonight with Nikki Oliva, and as you can see, he submitted plans. We also put up some pictures of what it looks like right now, because they did remove the overhang that was there. And obviously, what they plan on doing with the building is more than just adding a permanent overhang. They are, I mean, they're also going to improve the outside facade of the building, and they're doing a lot of work to improve the looks of that area, and the permanent overhang will definitely be beneficial to that building.
Right.
I don't have anything else to add.
Any comments from board members? Questions? Anyone out in the public sector have any comments, questions? If not, we'll close the hearing, we can go right to a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Mary, second by David, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
We'll get the paperwork out to you, Nick, we'll get it down to the stuff. All right?
All right.
Thank you. All five, all five main members of the board. Next application is for seven ten, we've got a couple of minutes, so take your time slowly putting those out. In the interim, it's close enough for me to call the meeting. This is on the application of F and D Central Realty Corporation on eighty-nine Main Street. This is for a variance from the provisions of section two point four and/or two point five of the zoning bylaws in relation to a forty-five thousand square foot more or less possible land located on the southeast of the side of Casey Drive in Milford, and known as number twenty-one Casey. The variance relief is sought to permit the completion of a construction of a single-family dwelling upon the premises located twenty-eight point seven feet from the front line of Casey Drive, notwithstanding the provisions of the zoning bylaw. The application on review, all the questions that were actually answered, it does not impact anything concerning the safety and welfare of the public. The owners were apparently, this is the condition, is the owner was unaware that the placement of the foundation was in violation of the minimum side setbacks. In good faith, they proceeded to construct the dwelling that only the front corner of the garage, approximately at one point three feet, is just too close to the front setback line, resulting in a physical, financial hardship if it was forced to be totally taken down in a great expense and inconvenience. This did come across the planning board, and they reviewed the petition at their June twelfth meeting, and they recommended favorable recommendation. In addition, the town planner indicated that the requested EBA on the subject property to remain at twenty-eight point seven feet from the property line versus thirty-foot minimum front yard setback was required. The original proposal was to construct a colonial-style house, which met all the setback requirements, however, when the design was changed to a ranch-style house with an attached three-car garage at the front, the one point three-foot encroachment was inadvertently created. Given the circumstances, they recommend a favorable report be forwarded on to this board. So with that, please give us the brief overview of your situation, Suzanne.
Okay. Well, if you, I'm sorry, I didn't get a big plan, but if you can see this from over there, these lots are not straight against, square against the road. They're kind of sideways, so then the front lot line doesn't go perpendicular to the two lot lines. So when our standard forty-foot colonial with a twenty-four by twenty-four family room was set on this lot, that whole front area is nice and straight and fit here. This ended up being a custom-built house, so when they set that on the lot, they still thought that they were within the setbacks, but obviously, when engineers went out and did the as-built for this house, that's when they determined that this, only the small front corner of the three-car garage is actually twenty-eight point seven feet away from the front of the lot, instead of being the thirty. As you can see, all other parts of the house are further back than even the thirty feet. It's just that one corner. I also brought some pictures of what the house looks like right now, so that you can see. This picture right here is actually taken across the street from the, from a driveway, and looking at it, you can't even tell that this house is somewhat set sideways or perpendicular or anything like that, and you can't tell that this corner is any closer to the front lot line as the other side of the garage. So I took a couple of other pictures, so you could see different angles, and it's such a small difference in the setback requirement, and it would be such a financial, huge financial hardship in order for my client to tear that down to make it in compliance, so we're asking that the board grant the relief sought with the variance.
Great. This apparently was not discovered until the engineers went out and actually performed the as-built on the ground?
That's correct.
Okay.
And right now, that house is still under construction. It is framed and sided, but inside, it's still, it's still roughed, yes.
Okay, great. With that, I'll start on John's side of the table. John, I'll start with you, if you have any questions?
No questions.
Charlie?
No.
Brian?
No, Jane.
Mary?
Nothing, I'm fine.
Dave?
All sir.
John? Kaz?
Questions?
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Anybody else have any questions in the public? If not, we'll close the hearing and do the vote.
Okay.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Motion to approve.
Motion by David to approve.
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Shot meeting. It's your bother fuck. It's your bother fuck.
I'm late, oh.
You are.
What's that gentleman's name?
Huh?
The gentleman, do you know who that?
I haven't found that.
Oh, okay.
The next application for seven fifteen is Cory and Kelly McDonald, you here?
Yeah, my husband's on his way, they're coming from Swimmy. He should be here in a second.
Why don't you come on up front, and you can get yourself situated, we'll give you a minute.
Well, I didn't write the presentation, I do have pictures, do you rather we?
Yeah, go ahead and put them up. Yep, please do.
Yeah, why don't you?
Might be on the hallway, too.
Why don't you pass those out, James?
There are only four by sixes, so I don't know if you can see them, but I don't mind putting them on.
Yeah, pass them out, please. Are these, are these animals?
My hens.
Okay, is there a plan or anything?
No.
Okay.
We're just, I don't know what I'm doing, we're coming, we applied for a special permit to keep our chickens.
All right, why don't you, why don't you bring them in, and then we'll get started on the hearing, I'll start following the hearing.
Can we wait one more minute?
The last hearing of the night, so we're going to need to, yeah, we have a seven fifteen time frame.
All right, well...
Let me, let me read everything first, and maybe he'll come in in the interim while I'm reading it.
Sure.
Okay. This is on the application of Cory and Kelly McDonald, playing North Pond Terrace, Milford, for a special permit in relation to section two point three of the zoning bylaw, in relation to that possible land located on the western side of Pine Island Road on North Pond Terrace, known and numbered as playing North Pond Terrace, shown on the assessors map, sheet ten, lot twenty. The special permit relief is sought to the applicant to keep hens on the property as residential animals within the meaning of the zoning bylaw. In the file, we have the applicant's information. We read the application. The applicant was asked, "The proposed use of the premises will not create undue congestion or impermeable pedestrian safety." The applicant states that the four hens are contained within a fenced area on our residential property away from the street and the property lines. They cannot be seen or heard unless they're on our property. Concerning the question, "Does the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public?" The applicant states, "Yes, see, be above. The girls cannot be seen or heard from the street or by our neighbors only when we enter on our property." With that, it was, the planning board reviewed this at their June twelfth meeting and recommend unfavorable report be sending off to the zoning board of appeals. See town planner letter, the town planner letter indicates the applicant did request a special permit to allow residential animals on the subject property. Specifically, the proposal is to keep four hens in an outdoor fenced area on the lot. Since no site plan has been submitted, is required, it is difficult to determine exactly where on the property the chickens ought to be located. The property is a non-conforming seven thousand thirteen square foot lot in an RC zoning district. In addition, the property is in a densely developed area made up of multiple small non-conforming lots. Therefore, he recommended an unfavorable report be forwarded on to the zoning board of appeals. So with that, the first thing I will do is I'll go to board members to ask questions. Once the board members, I've gone through the board members on their comments or any of their questions, I will petition the audience, if they have any questions, please, any comments or questions that'll be directed directly through the chairman, and then if there's any answers that we need to be able to rectify from there, we'll take it at that point. So with that, this time, Mark, I'm going to start on your end of the table. If you have those pictures, you can start, you can give them to the Mark over here, and we can, you can, we'll take a look at them.
Okay. Do you want to start with questions?
No, just, we'll go through the questions, why don't you pass those out while we're talking?
So, these are our four hens.
No, just, just give them to, and we'll review them.
Oh, I can't give you their names, because...
No. I'm sorry.
Okay.
They're not supposed to be on the property with all the special permit now.
So, all right, so can I address that first?
Let us ask you questions, and then, and then, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, those are our hens.
If you have pictures of the property, the hens, that's fine, we'll take a look at them.
I didn't have them organized, because I was, I didn't know what to expect. But I do have, I took pictures today from the road.
This is the shower, sir?
That's my property, mhm, we're on a hill.
Okay.
And we have a hundred feet from the road to the water, and I took three shots from the road, and...
Why don't you just pass those around, John?
And these are from the water.
You want the chickens first?
Whatever you want to do, so we can move this thing along. You can have a seat, ma'am, and we'll ask questions as we go along.
All right.
It's a pretty congested area up there.
It's actually not.
I was there this morning.
It's wooded, it's all wooded, and we're off the road, and we're on the lake, and we just acquired the property next door to us.
You just have four hens?
Just four hens, no boosters.
I was there about eleven o'clock this morning. It was a little, little noisy, little noisy when I was there.
Okay.
I don't know if it was feeding time or...
Well, that could have been, I laid an egg time.
Okay.
They have a little song, I laid an egg.
I guess that's all I have.
John?
Not now.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
No questions yet?
So, which house is yours?
The house on the left.
So that's the house next door to you?
Well, actually, the house next door to me, we just purchased that, that's unoccupied.
What size lot do you have?
Two seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
Two thousand, three house and one thousand and a half house.
Okay, and you don't, you didn't offer a plan or anything, so we have no idea where you're going to put these.
I do not receive any...
So what do they do, just run around the yard?
No, I have, they have a coop, they have a coop with an enclosed pen, but yes...
Do you have a picture of it?
Yeah, I do. So, we homeschool, and that was part of our project, to build a little four-by-four coop with an attached pen, and we, with the children, we designed it and then built it, taught the kids how to measure. Ah, sorry. Taught the children how to measure.
So you don't have a site plan at all?
I don't even know what that is.
When you picked up the application, there was a direction as to follow in your application procedure?
No.
Did you do any of that?
I came in and asked specifically, because some of the information wasn't clear, because it was all, like, making a building, and I'm not trying to propose a building, I just wanted to keep our hens.
So did, so you currently have the animals on the site now, without a permit?
Yes.
Okay. So when you got the application procedure for the, to apply for the permit, it gave you an indication of what you needed to supply to the planning board and the zoning board?
And I did that, but I went to...
There's no plan here?
I went to legal, and I also went to town clerk and asked, made sure they had everything, and they approved everything, I had everything according to what you required, and that was what I went with.
Yeah, there's no, there's no plan here.
So what exactly is a site plan that you're asking, do you need to know? So here, here's, all right, I have a finished...
Why don't you pass, yeah, pass those, remember, we'll continue with the questions as we go along.
So there's the inside, here it is, that's not finished, but the handles are on, that's my coop. It's a four-by-four coop structure with an attached ten-foot pen.
What's the running area of them, just here, period?
So, and this comes off to the front, so this is like that.
Okay.
So I have a four-by-four coop, and all the storage and everything is in there, and then they have a ten or twelve-foot run, it's a ten-foot run, and then they're purchased, they live in there, and then during the day, let them out, and they have a fenced-in area...
You let them out of this area during the day?
Yep.
So they run free on the yard?
Mhm.
All right, Mark, why don't you pass those along, we continue with the questions?
I do have to say, part of the reason is I have a dietary restriction, so this was part of my, also, to get organic, cage-free eggs, to help with my dietary issues.
Brian, have anything?
Do you want to see the kids working on it? Does that matter?
No.
As homeschool, it's applied math, mathematics, measuring, vocational studies.
Is there, did you pull a permit for the shed?
It's not, it's not a permanent structure.
You can pick that up and just move it?
It's heavy, but it can be moved.
What's the size of it?
Four by fourteen, sixteen.
You can pick that up and move it?
Yeah, with the rollers and stuff.
Okay.
Who's the kids working on it?
John?
Yep. I have a few questions.
Sure.
First of all, how long have you owned this property?
We've been on the property eighteen years.
Nineteen ninety-six. Nineteen ninety-six, so you're a long, fairly long-term residence on this property. Okay, and that's been your major residence, not a home where you went for the venia, the lake? Primary residence. Huh? Primary residence. Primary residence, okay. How long have you had the chickens there?
Last fall.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with you or any of your neighbors with respect to the fact that there might be a problem with these?
I did, I did confer with my immediate neighbors around, that I was toying with the idea of chickens on account of the dietary and the other issues, and everybody was okay, the only stipulation was no boosters, so that was fine. Now, we do have many neighbors in town, or friends and neighbors in town across the lake, that have chickens. There are no bylaws, I never even thought to, I never even thought to ask, and then there is an article in the gist that says that Milford has fifteen hundred chickens and twenty-five cows, or eight cows, two goats, one horse, and twenty-five alpacas.
No.
So I didn't...
How did you finally end up coming to get an application? What precipitated?
I received a letter saying that I, it was known that, or they came to knowledge that I have chickens on the process, and that I needed to surrender the chickens or apply for a special permit.
And where did that letter come from?
Town.
The town?
John Erickson.
Okay, all right, thank you.
John?
I have no questions this time, excuse me.
Okay. If any other board members don't have any question at this time, I'll ask anybody in the audience, if you're going to speak, please, oh, I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
I just, I didn't hear, where on the property is the coop located?
So the property is between, it's about twenty feet away from the house, between the house and the swing set on the hill.
It's in the road.
So it's between the road and the house.
Okay, so the, I guess the front of the property, essentially?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I had, it's a chance, thanks.
Okay. Again, if someone in the audience wants to speak, you're more than welcome, please address all your questions through the chair, we'll try and get your answers for you. We ask you that you state your name, and you're at, you know, so that we know that you're a Milford resident, of course. Yes, please stand up. Gina?
Hello. Gina Wodrell, I live at fourteen Pine Terrace, my property directly is right next to Kelly and Cory's house. We've been there for, going on fifteen years. It is a very private, thickly wooded yard for both properties, for hers and mine. Kelly had mentioned well over a year ago about the thought of getting chickens, and mentioned it to us, we had no problem with it. They built the coop, we saw the whole process, and have had no problem at all. As I said, if you walked the properties, you can't see the chicken coop unless you go right into Kelly's yard, and the chicken coop isn't that big, and the chickens are only out when Kelly is home, and they're in a fenced-in area within the yard, it's not, they're not wandering the yard, so I think that should be made clear. The structure is not big, the chickens are not noisy. Frankly, I think it's a pleasure to have them there, and because they're like little Being that, like, Kelly and Cory have the two lots, and then I have three lots after that, on, if you know the, if you know the neighborhood up there, it's a little complex with how the properties work, but there's plenty of room up there for chickens. Like I said, there's sight sound barriers between all the houses, I'm a big believer of that, and it's, it's not a problem. So, I feel like, you know, living that close to them, I would be the first, you know, if there was a problem, I would be the first one, that would be like, this is ridiculous, but there's no problem at all with any, any of that. There's only, what, Kelly, four? Four. Four, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I am Skip Waters.
Please take the microphone.
Thirty-four Pine Island Road.
Skip, would you take the microphone for me? Thank you.
Thirty-four Pine Island Road, I've been there sixteen years. I have no problem whatsoever with Kelly and Cory having these chickens. They're good neighbors, good friends, and they wouldn't do anything to hurt the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Michael Garberino, thirty-seven Pine Island Road, been there since two thousand and seven. I have no personal problems with these folks. My only concern is the proximity to the birds close to the water. We had a problem only a couple of years ago with ducks infecting the watershed in Milford, so we swim in this lake, this is all our, you know, something that we all use, so that's my only concern, is the proximity.
Okay.
Can I answer to that?
Yep, you may.
Chickens don't swim, and they're up on the front part of the yard, they don't go down to the water, and also, I do, we do keep food care and clean, I have a blue compost thing, and compost chicken poop is a great fertilizer for gardens, so try to make a compost for gardening, so that should not be a problem with the lake.
Anybody else?
Counsel, please, sir.
Yes, please.
Judge Martin, forty-one Pine Island Road, I'm directly across the street from Kelly. I've been, I moved in nineteen eighty-four, and... and other than Lynn, I'm the longest resident than anybody in this room that lives up there. There's no problems with those chickens. They're friendly, they, um, they don't make any noise. Like Kelly says, they might squawk if they lay in an egg. But I'll tell you right now, to be God's honest truth, is that dogs in the neighborhood that far are louder, motorcycles that go up and down the road are more annoying, um, commercial vehicles that live in, um, that are in the neighborhood are more disturbing than four little chickens. She came to me about the chickens, and I said, I don't have a problem with chickens. They're clean people, they're honest people. They abide by the law. Um, unfortunately, she didn't know that she needed a permit, so I don't have any objection to her having the chickens. They're actually funny, and they're nuts. Um, and what was on in our neighborhood lately, it's nice to have something that makes you laugh. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Any other comments from board members? I'll make a, I'll make a brief statement because we've, we've dealt, let me make this statement first, and then I'll revert back to you. We've had the issues with this particular process before. Sometimes it doesn't work, sometimes it does work. Uh, there's times when we have, uh, no objection from the butters, and sometimes, even though you have no objections, you're on a very tight location, um, it's close to the water. The, um, aspects of size of lot certainly makes a huge difference when you're trying to care for animals like this. We have made decisions in the past where we've denied this exact type of application, only because of the dense area of the population of the neighborhood. Challenging as it is, even when, in that area, because everything is so tightly congested, it's a similar situation. In addition to that, we've also issued temporary orders of, um, relief, specifically, um, in a, in a situation where the chickens are currently there illegally, they should've never been on the property to begin with, without properly getting a license or a special permit to occupy them. In the past, we have issued a temporary permit for a year. Interestingly enough, that occupant never, that homeowner never came back to even extend that permit, because they didn't want them anymore. I don't know how the board's gonna react to what they'd like to do tonight, but I wanted to bring out all those facets on the table, because it's very possible. It could be voted as a yea, or it could be very, very possible it could be, um, a no. And if it's a no, those chickens have to leave the property, and you'd have to have another location to put them. And again, I'm kind of, I'm kind of miffed to the fact that you were given an application to apply a special permit, and the directions are on that application of what the boards needed, and not a single site plan was brought in front of us showing where anything was. So, I, I, I have a real problem with that, because clearly that was apparently avoided to be submitted. But in any event, I made those comments, so at this point, if no one else has anything to say, we can certainly take the, uh, close the hearing and take it under advisement. I'll allow you your, your last, uh...
I do have one comment.
Go ahead.
I, I do agree with what you have said. I'm, I'm very disappointed there's no site plan, because you, you clearly have a, um, a structure you've made for them that is... You said it's fourteen, just, just, no, no. That is something that had to be submitted with the plans, uh, in the application, but it just concerns me that there wasn't anything, and, um, like Mr. Consigli said, it's, um, it's close quarters up there. I'm always, I'm always worried that maybe some of the neighbors aren't now, but some of the other people that have come before have had some issues with, um, other animals coming in to the area and having it in close proximity. I have concerns with that, but first and foremost, it's the fact that there was no site plan, and I couldn't support it because the application, as far as I'm concerned, wasn't complete.
Okay. Mark?
From what I see here, nobody's said they don't want it there. No, one neighbor has said they don't want it there. Normally, if we have dissension, we usually lean that way for the neighborhood. The children, obviously, are learning quite a bit, from what I saw. Um, none of the neighbors are complaining about it. I, my suggestion would be, they've been there since the fall, and obviously, there hasn't been a problem. My suggestion would be, rather than the one year we normally extend, only a six-month, and see how it works.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have, um, obviously, what Mark says is very important, how the neighbors feel about something like this. There are a lot of chickens in Milford, as we know. Uh, obviously, these people, uh, missed up on the point of, uh, bringing before a, a site plan. I understand that. Uh, I don't think it was done with any malice or trying not to keep within the letter of the application, so I think it would be too bad for them not to walk out of here and still have their chickens, so there could be a, a situation here where we could do one or two things. We could, uh, ask to carry this on and have them submit the right paperwork, and I only say that in light of the support that they have from the neighbors, so I think there's some options here, and I think, Dave, given the situation, we should determine who's on this case.
It's, it's the five full-time members.
Okay, fine. So, I'm an alternate, so that's my point.
And clearly, if they, if they decided that they wanted to continue this hearing and, and for another time, that's certainly their decision, and with the understanding that, you know, a plan would have to come into play, or the, the board can just make a decision tonight, and, and that decision will be final. You know, I can go, I can go either way on something like this. I mean, clearly, I, I, a plan is important, I think a plan needs to be done. I can, I can think about supporting something on a temporary basis to see how this goes, to make sure that the entire neighborhood, doesn't have, or ends up creating second thoughts as time goes on, and that the applicant would have to come back every six months or a year and renew that application to make sure that, um, everything that was issued in the decision had to be conformed to. If that application or that extension is not sent, then of course, they lose the right to have anything. So, um, I, I'll leave the decision to this board on what they would like to do. I will leave, I will leave you with a question whether you can want to continue this hearing, or we will, we will close the hearing right now, giving you your last word of what you'd like to say, and then we will take a vote.
The main thing would be the site plan that I obviously was confused about. It was not done intentionally. I would have, I didn't buy blueprints. Like I said, we, we built it together. Um, we drew it up. I can give you my handwritten notes, uh, the site plan where it's located. I would be happy to submit that. That was clearly not intentionable. I can't even begin to tell you how funny these birds are, and how much joy they bring our family. They're not, they, I know to you, they're farm animals, but to us, they, we, we hand-feed them, they're funny, they have these little songs. They, they really truly are pets at this point. They're not, they're not cooped up. We don't, we're trying to train them to do tricks. Um, they're just funny. Be happy to have you come in to visit them. Um, this really, truly would be a hardship on my family if you decide to deny us the application.
Mr. Chairman? Yep. John?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to remind this board that along the lines of consistency, we have had three previous hearings on this very similar situation. I believe one of the requests was for Parkhurst Street, down off East Main Street, very thickly populated area. Uh, there was a cor, same request for chickens up on Reservoir, very isolated area, wooded area. And in those two most recent cases, uh, both requests were denied.
Correct.
This board is very accommodating to residents, um, probably more so than any board in this town. I think that we go out of our way to help residents. That being said, this is probably one of the toughest things that we ever have to address. I also took a ride up there today, and, um, as Mark had said, I could hear the chickens. Now, not that you're on top of each other, uh, in that neighborhood, but, uh, the houses are relatively close together. So I assume that if I could hear it from the road, um, the other residents can also. So, um, as I said, it's a tough decision, but for, for purposes of being consistent in what we do, I, I would have to vote unfavorable on this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Mark? On the Parkhurst situation, we had dissension from the neighbors. That was number one. On the one in Reservoir, he wanted like fifteen chickens. This is four chickens, and not one neighbor is complaining. Not one. John heard the noise, I heard the noise, but the neighbors don't mind it. I strongly recommend, my, my recommendation is six months, if it's approved by the board, and return with a site plan. And that's it.
Anybody else?
I've already spoken.
I, I, um...
That's right.
And, and actually, I agree with John. He's very, he's right. Consistency is important. Each aspect of each application from Parkhurst to, to, um, Reservoir Road, um, each one had their own different aspects, from many chickens to them being put in the front yard, to a very small yard, same-size yard as this, um, and frankly, that was even, that our decision was actually appealed and lost in court. So, you know, clearly, we need to have guidelines. There are rules and regulations in the community. We bend over backwards to help as many people as we can. Any decisions that are made on this board are not made lightly. If anything, they're very difficult to do, so, um, with that, um, you know, I'm torn in between, um, a, a total unfavorable or a trial period of six months, providing there's a plan in place. So, so at that point, um, you know, I, I'm really, I'm not ready yet to, uh, to make a determination one way or the other. I will give you your last word before we take the vote.
Well, honestly, I really didn't think four little hens would cause such controversy. I don't understand, other than my mistake of not getting the permit or following the site plan properly, I don't understand how you could grant fifteen hundred chickens in the town of Milford to drive around. They're everywhere, and, um, based on our location, we're on a dead-end road, and, um... I'm just really heartbroken. I do have, um, signatures from the rest of the neighborhood.
Would you like those put in the file?
Sure.
Would you like the, uh, newspaper article as well, so that's more, if I please, if I can.
No, why don't you keep that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen signatures on here. A couple of them, a few of them, one, two, three, from the same address, two others from the same address.
Yeah, I went by the abutters list and went to all the addresses on the abutters list, and went up the road and looked for them.
And again, and again, let's, I, I want to be kind of clear, because, you know, it's not the board's fault that the chicken ended up at your property, because it's against the zoning bylaw. So, when a decision is made as difficult as this, it's not the board's fault that this particular situation is implied.
Right, so after I got the letter, I looked up the zoning, the zoning laws, and all of the zoning in Milford says that there are no chickens. So I don't understand, then, where do these people live to have fifteen hundred chickens?
I don't know, I don't know where they live, but if you've got a letter from the building department that you're in violation, then I'm sure that eventually they may end up going to those particular properties as well. But I, I'm giving you your last word before we take the vote, so, um, again, you have the right to continue this and come back if you choose, if you want to bring counsel in or something like, that's up to you, but you have the right to continue it if you want.
Yeah, the only thing, Dave, is I don't think it's fair to the people. You have two board members that have both said they vote, they're not, won't support it. So I don't think it's fair to ask them to continue it and ask them to go and spend money and go get a plan drawn up and stuff like that, only to come back, when two board members have said that they are against it. So I think you, you gotta communicate that to them.
No, I agree. I'm not asking them to spend any more money.
Yeah.
Guys, you want to say anything? Well, I would ask to at least give us a temporary permit to see how it works. I really don't want to give up.
Alright, so you, so we'll close the hearing, and we'll go right to, uh, making a decision. Uh, any motions?
I make a favorable motion.
You make a motion to do what?
To approve.
For, with conditions? What are you making a motion on?
Conditions, six months and come back with site plan.
Mark's making a motion for six months, uh, to have the applicant come back with a site plan and, um, an extension, a possible extension, therefore, after that. Is there a second? They'll second if a discussion, if there is one.
Yeah. Can I just add one more thing, or is it...
Uh, inappropriate.
No, I'm not on it.
Appropriate, now, you're not on it.
Yeah, I got you.
Thank you, Dr. John. Uh, any discussion? So with that, um, there's a motion on the table, um, for a, um, a six-month issuance of a special permit, allowing that the applicant comes back with a plan. It's been seconded, so all those in favor of the six-month process of a special permit to allow the chickens today, subject to them providing a plan. In addition, we also know that the risk of that, that that permit can be extended as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion to deny. That's been denied. John made a motion to, uh, to deny the, to deny the use of the special permit. All those in favor? Opposed. Three, three in favor, one opposed. Laurie, thank you. With that, um, there are no other hearings tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Me too.